Step back in the room.
Past his prime.
We love you, man.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Warwick County Commissioners Meeting. We're going to call it to order. Today is October 23rd, 2023. Time is 4:00 P. M. Dr. Deach, would you lead us in the pleasure of allegiance, please?
Pleasure, please. This is why I am with the United States of America. Into the Republic for its sustenance. One nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. As always, first order of business is area plan.
First item would be a request for extension of surety. Commercial Drive C 2005-6. Entrance construction on Lot 6, Northwark Industrial Park, Section 3. 11200, Industrial Park Drive, Hookat Holdings LLC by Evan Beck, the managing member. We're holding $14,201 surety and escrow guaranteeing the completion. They've had one additional year, or they're requesting one additional year at the same amount. They've had three years, and the surety expires November 19th of 23.
Jim Morley, Jr., project engineer. This is the commercial entrance on what's called the Shell Building at Northwark Industrial Park. And they have not finished the site work on that project because they're waiting to see what tenant moves into there. And so therefore, they've not put the commercial drive in, and they're asking for an extension to put the commercial drive in.
Anything else, Bobby?
Dollar amount is sufficient.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Commissioner Saylor's absent. All in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero.
Thank you.
Our next would be Lexington Estate Subdivision, First Federal Savings Bank by Michael Carter, SVP. Holding two letters of credit for drainage construction at $6,325 and one for street construction at $6,603.99. They're requesting one year on both letters. They've had six years. This, these expire November 17th of 2022.
Good afternoon, Michael.
Yeah, Michael Carter, First Federal.
Anything bad?
Other than for all these with our name on it, we're just, we've got, the work is being done right now. And I believe it was, it was a while ago, and we tried to, after the, we thought we'd finish everything through the letters of credit. There was an additional punch list, and we were just told to not submit for completion to all those items are done. So just wait until every single thing is done before coming with that. And that'll be kind of the same answer for all of them.
Yeah. Do we want to take them all at once, or? B, C, and D?
They're two separate subdivisions for First Federal.
One at a time.
So dollar amounts are sufficient.
Okay.
So on B, I'll make a motion for approval.
And I'll second. All in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero.
On C, make a motion for approval.
Now, that's Neem Holmes by Kush Patel on sidewalks.
That's on D.
Not C. C is same, Michael Carter.
Oh, it's changed on mine, sorry.
It's changed on mine as well.
Okay. So C is Lexington Sub?
D, make a motion for approval.
From that sheet over there, I've got a B and C, and then D is Neem Holmes, and then there's an E.
So to be clear, the motion is for Lexington subdivision, First Federal Bank by Michael Carter for?
Forty-four seventy-five.
Forty-four seventy-five, correct?
For drainage and thirty-four fifty for street.
Correct. That's the motion.
That's the motion.
I'll second that. All in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero.
Then for E, Echo Village of Lexington 2, PUD, in the amount of $690, make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero. Okay. Thank you.
Now, back to Lexington Estate subdivision, Neem Holmes by Kush Patel. Bobby, are you okay with that one?
That dollar amount is sufficient.
Molly, anything to add there?
Um, we're, it's $25,636.80 for sidewalks, and they've had 17 years.
Okay. I know Molly likes to read them all up there, so.
But this guy hasn't had 17 years himself, though. He bought after the fact, right?
Yes, yes. That's 17 total for the subdivision. Is this the one that went into bankruptcy and?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel, can we approve this without them being here?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Well, second. All in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero.
Our last one's a street acceptance. Berkshire Phase 5 by Macon Corporation, Danny Ubler, managing member. Promptum Drive at 592.3 lineal feet. Abbeywood Drive at 148.8 lineal feet. Camden Drive at 792.8 lineal feet. Uh, the letter of credit's $49,392.20. And this was continued from our last meeting, and I believe we have a signature on the street acceptance.
Uh, yes, the items from the original, our punch lists have been taken care of, and I recommend approval.
You think that?
No.
No personal check today? No cashier's checked it.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor. My motion carries two zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all for the area plan commission.
Thank you. All right. Next order of business is our action agenda, and the first item there is the approval of minutes from October 9th, 2023, regular session.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero. Next order of business is our county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the first item I have is in addition to the agenda since it was emailed last week, is a surplus declaration of sheriff department's vehicles. They have three, a 2004 Ford Explorer, 2005 Ford Explorer, sorry. Uh, VIN ending B29397, a 2015 Dodge Charger, VIN ending 841207, and another 2015 Dodge Charger, uh, VIN ending in 837003. They would like those declared surplus.
Questions?
I do have some questions, but our sheriff's not here.
Um, what information I can give you from the email that I received is that, um, one of the vehicles is needing $2,500 in repairs that they didn't feel was of value, and the other two are not worth repairing. Um, they're, they have nine more vehicles coming in, so these are rolling out.
I think what we're after here is to see what the next use was, if any.
Didn't sound like there was.
Right now, we're just going to declare them surplus, and we can answer those questions from there.
Make a motion to approve the surplus declaration.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero.
Okay. The next item I have is the consent agenda, and on the consent agenda tonight is the county auditor claims voucher, report date 10/18/2023. The payroll voucher dated 10/20/2023. Waits and Major's monthly report from September 16th through October 15th, 2023. The Warwick Commune Society Miles for Muts 5K Trail Use Approval. And then added is the NetSavvy Independent Contractor Agreement.
Okay. Questions?
Question for counsel. You have not seen the NetSavvy contract agreement?
I don't recall, Heather, did I, I don't recall seeing it come across my emails.
That is, we, we used our generic independent contractor agreement for that one.
Added there.
Just added the list of items to Appendix A per what Terry and Bob and Dan have discussed with, uh, Mr. Myers.
Okay.
Are you okay with that, counsel?
Why don't, why don't we go and do the consent agenda? Do A through D, and then let's take E separately, and we can do that just pending council review.
Okay. On the consent agenda, make a motion for A through D to approve.
And I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
My motion carries two zero.
On E, I will make a motion to approve pending council review and agreement.
And I will second that. All in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Next order of business is our county engineer and highway superintendent.
Uh, thank you. The first item I have is Bridge 310. It's an amendment for PE services. This is for, uh, with Lockmueller Group, and this is to do with two subcontractors and some, uh, construction phase services that the subs did not originally give to Lockmueller in the proposal that they submitted, so. Uh, these are, these are needed to be done to proceed with the project, though, and it's for a total of $10,000.
Ten even?
Yes. And it's for Bridge 310 on Myers Road. The, uh, part of this is the old bridge. It's historic and going to be rebuilt at Frieden and Park. And, uh, part of this is for, uh, any questions during the reconstruction of the old trust and helping catalog that.
Is this what was approved at the last meeting, Bobby, was Bridge 310?
Uh, that was a construction inspection agreement.
Okay.
This is a part of the preliminary engineering construction phase services for the designers.
I guess, I guess it's something that has to be done.
Yes.
How long have we been working on this bridge?
This is ready to go to construction. It should make the February letting.
But we've been talking about this bridge.
It's a four-year, federal aid. It's four, four years, yeah, from start to finish.
I know there's a lot of details. I just think that's plenty of time to catch things that were left out. That's, that's my comment.
I understand.
So, and it's got to be done.
Make a motion to approve Bridge 310 amendment.
I'll second that. All in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero.
Uh, the next item, item B, I don't know if anyone can hear from Newburg Sewer. I recommend it be tabled.
Make a motion to table until our next meeting of?
November 13th.
November 13th.
Excuse me. And I'll second that. All in favor. My motion carries two zero.
The last item I have is the LPA Consulting Contract Agreement for Telephone Road from Bell Road to Fuquay Road. This is for construction inspection with American Structure Point, uh, for the amount of $963,644.76. And this is 80% federal reimbursable.
Make a motion to approve Telephone Road Construction Inspection Agreement.
Second that. All in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries two zero.
And just, just for FYI, this project is scheduled for the July 2024 letting. And we hope to have utilities. Uh, all the right of way was cleared earlier this month, so utilities should start getting their notice to proceed. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. And the next order of business is Sherry, our acquisition administrator, opening bids for Warwick County Generator Service.
Hi, Sherry Severs, uh, Warwick County Acquisitions Administrator. And, uh, this evening, we are opening bids for the Warwick County 2023 Generator Service Contract. And before you, uh, it shows the three companies that, um, who were invited, uh, to quote Evapar, who we currently have, uh, our service with, uh, Cummings Sales and Service and Dayville On-Site, uh, Services. So, and you have before you that you can mark, um, the, the completed request forms on the front and then the back, uh, where you can list the amount of the proposals. So the first one that we received was from, uh, Evapar. And they do have their business reference form. They do have their form of proposal. They do have their equal employment opportunity form. They do have their e-verification affidavit, so we know that they're not an alien. They do have their acceptance and agreement of terms. The only thing that they do not have in here is their certificate of insurance. So on their form of proposal, I have them in alphabetical order on your form of proposals in front of you. So this would be, uh, Evapar. So for, um, we have, the county has seven generators, uh, located, uh, County Jail, Judicial Center, Historic Courthouse, uh, Disaster Storage, Chandler EMS, Alcoa, and the Boomville Water Tower. So, uh, on the GenRec 100 KW located at the County Jail, semi-annual rate would be $940. Annual weight rate would be $1,150.
We haven't received yet.
Two-year maintenance rate would be $940. Three-year maintenance rate would be $1,300. The emergency rate to 25. Uh, for the Judicial Center GenRec 45KW, uh, semi-annual rate would be $865. Annual rate would be $1,075. Two-year maintenance rate would be $865. Three-year maintenance rate would be $1,100. And emergency hourly rate would be $225. For the Cummings, uh, 150KW located at the Historic Courthouse, semi-annual rate would be $1,035. Annual rate would be $1,245. Two-year maintenance rate would be $1,035. Three-year maintenance rate would be $1,400. Emergency hourly rate, $225. For the GenRec 22KW located at the Disaster Storage, semi-annual rate would be 825. Annual rate would be $1,035. Two-year maintenance, 825. Three-year maintenance, $1,100. And emergency, 225. For the Cummings, 35KW located at Chandler EMS, semi-annual rate, $825. Annual rate, $1,035. Two-year maintenance, $825. Three-year maintenance, $1,100. And emergency annual or emergency hourly rate, $225. For the, um, Onan Generator located at Alcoa, semi-annual rate is $865. Annual rate is $1,075. Two-year maintenance is $865. Three-year maintenance rate, $1,100. And emergency hourly rate, 225. And for the last generator, the Cummings 11KW located at Boomville Water Tower, semi-annual rate is $825. Annual rate is $1,035. Two-year maintenance is $825. Three-year maintenance, $1,100. And emergency hourly rate is $225. The next one we received is from, uh, Dayville On-Site Services. And I have, uh, attached with your paperwork there, uh, a letter of recommendation from Jake Greer, the director of our Warwick County EMA. He's used, um, Dayville On-Site Services because we are currently out of contract, uh, with Evapar, and he had some very nice things to say. So. We do have, uh, equal opportunity employment form. Have the e-verification form. Acceptance and agreement of terms. Business references. Form of proposal. And certificate of liability, in addition to one letter of recommendation. For Dayville On-Site Services.
Yes, Sherry.
Yes.
On those?
Mm-hmm.
Just want to read the numbers across the line as they go.
Okay. Sure. Okay. So, uh, for the GenRec 100KW County Jail, 375, 930, 1,570, 250. For the GenRec 45KW, Judicial Center, 375, 886, 152650, 2,294, $250. For the generator at the Historic Courthouse, 375, 1,270, 1,910, 3,048, 250. The generator of the Disaster Storage, 250, 599, 988, and 250. For the Chandler EMS, 375, 1,085, 1,725, 3,275, and 250. Uh, for the generator at Alcoa, 375, 1,085, 1,744, 3,310, 250. And for the generator at the Boomville Water Tower, 375, 1,085, 1,725, and 250. And that concludes all the totals.
Sorry, I've got questions.
And I, I might also add, uh, that the Dayville On-Site also is the new, uh, service generator provider for the Boomville Fire Department. And then it looks like with Evapar, the only thing that I need to reach out to them on, uh, is they've neglected to put their certificate, certificate of insurance in there.
Sherry, bear with me a moment. Have you added these up to see what is a low-cost provider here?
No, because they were still bids. I, I wasn't able to, but I'm happy to do that and provide those numbers to you tomorrow.
I think that's the way we should go.
Okay.
Because this is a, they're all over the place.
They are. They are.
I guess when you look at, uh, taking Boomville Water Tower, for example, on three-year maintenance, 3275 is very close to the 1,100 figure for the other provider. Did they quote it on a, on a one-year to one-year to one-year basis, and the other one quoted it as a sum?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, Sherry, suggestively.
I, I think that we should, uh, take this under advisement for now. Let Sherry do some math and, uh, bring it to us tomorrow. I don't think we're in that big of a hurry, are we?
We, we're currently out of contract anyway, so, uh, when we do need generator service, Jake is using who he, he feels like is best for right now.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to table until next meeting.
Okay.
You good with that, counsel?
Yes. And, uh, Bobby had shared also a reminder, we do have a new generator at the?
Van Road.
Van Road.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that.
We actually have it, yeah.
We're allowed to move in, but we haven't finished the contract yet.
It's, it's there, though, right? Yeah.
Yes. It's there. It's in place and.
Okay.
So.
I can reach out and get a number from both of these?
Yes.
For that one?
Okay. So Bob's made a motion to the table, and I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries two zero.
Thank you, commissioners.
Makes trouble. Information that looks great. And next order of business is from our county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one item. Received a proposal, uh, for con, uh, some continuous electronic radon monitors from our contractor, Popham Construction. Uh, they were able to receive, get these at a discounted rate, which is a good thing. Um, so for a total of 25 devices set up and, uh, uh, let's see, procurement and setup, uh, and the activation, deployment of those devices here in the building, uh, total of $19,995. There were some additional services that were offered as well, uh, which, uh, for monitoring and, uh, other work by them that, uh, also could be considered, uh, but the, uh, that numbers figure for the devices itself. Uh, there's additional monthly maintenance, monitoring services, uh, yearly annual calibration cost, um, and their quote as well.
Okay.
So I'd like to go ahead and get the devices ordered.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the up to 25 devices, depending on how many we determine we need. And if you want to go with the 25, we can order the 25, but up to 25.
I recall that he say, what the turnaround time on those is?
I do not recall.
I think I asked him that, and he said it was a couple of weeks, and I could be wrong.
Kind of supply chain issues maybe at play there, so.
He was also going to look into some sort of a, how to secure these, uh, devices as well, and if that meant some sort of a cage or something to put them in to keep them from being tampered with. And he, uh, he was looking for cost on that, but I do not believe we've received that just yet.
Again, so you've made the motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll second that and all in favor. My motion carries two zero.
Just for clarifications, that was just approving of the purchase of the devices itself. The monthly and other services, we look at a little further.
To be determined. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Anything else for the board?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor. Motion carries.
Did you notice Steve Sherwood takes up for Bobby and does his job, it's quicker?